Good evening. I'd like to call the orders. The Thursday, July tenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Culver Town Council to order. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded, and your participation is your consent to be rebroadcast on the Town's YouTube channel. If you have an electronic device, it'd be most appreciated if you would turn it off at this time. Roll call, please.
William Covinger, Justin Croy, Jeanine Monroe, Dean De Nier, Sally Attorney.
Here.
Will be all joined in place for a closing. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda is approval of the votes of the June twenty-sixth meeting of the Culver Town Council. Counselors, does anybody have any additions or corrections? Bearing none, entertain the motion approved. It's been moved by Mr. Monroe. Seconded by Mr. De Nier. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those same sign, thank you. Public concern, utility and ordinance violation appeal. Anyone in the room? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Julie Bask, and I received my bill recently for my water. And I own the property at four twelve West Marmont, and my usage was very high. I don't currently live there. But then I got a bill that is eleven hundred, yeah, eleven hundred dollars, eleven hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. And I been asked, I received a call from the deputy clerk on the twenty-third, who had requested report when she saw my high usage. And she called and she said, you have high usage. Again, this happened to me once before when I first bought the house. There was a toilet that wasn't malfunctioning, and since it's been replaced. That bill was eight hundred forty-five dollars, and I was told I had to pay the bill. There was nothing that could be done. And I paid the bill because obviously it was a bad toilet that I didn't know about. This past month, like I said, I'm not there that often, but could not understand why it was so high. So then the deputy clerk called me and said, do you want us to go check your water? Because I was at work at the time, and she said I was running a hundred gallons per hour since, I can't remember what the day was, May nineteenth?
I'm gonna say May sixteenth, you don't, I think that's what I remember.
Okay, and so I did not know at the time until I received an email from the clerk that there is a forgiveness policy that I wasn't offered the first go-around, but I'm asking if I can have relief this time for the eleven hundred dollars.
What was the reason again they stated?
Um, well, we're not quite sure because Mr. Wakefield, who is my contractor, went over after hearing about it, and he checked it out. He turned the water at the base off the toilet. The toilet, in the meantime, he found a huge crack going from the handle all the way down to the base. So then Mr. Dante and Bob Porter, my sister went over, sorry, Mr. Monroe, went over and let them in to check it out. They did turn the water back on and then found that the flapper on the toilet was standing up. I had been in there maybe a week before or sometime before, and I did not hear it running. I had NIPSCO over there because I had a previous issue. And did not notice anything, although there was water stains around the toilet, but we thought that was from something else, but I don't know. We're not for certain. Like I said, I don't live there at the moment, but I guess the like, this one time I did.
I did go ahead and email documented what had happened, and I went ahead and emailed Ms. Bask the Town of Culver one-time sewer forgiveness policy, so that she had the opportunity to review it and decide what she wanted to do. It is, do you want me to read it? Basically summarizing, in the event of a water leak where the utility customer can demonstrate that the water used by the customer did not enter the public sewer system, the customer will be eligible to petition the town council for a one-time sewer forgiveness bill. The customer still will be responsible for any water charges or fees for water actually used, but the customer can apply for forgiveness of the sewer rate charges if the customer can demonstrate to the town satisfaction that the leaking portion of the water did not enter the public sewer treatment system. And to receive the one-time sewer forgiveness, the customer must submit an application for the town's one-time sewer forgiveness program and receive approval from the town council on said application. And then to determine the amount of sewer forgiveness that will be applied to the individual bill, the town clerk or his or her designated shall determine the twelve-month average sewer fee for the account and adjust the sewer portion of the bill down to the twelve-month average. The difference between the original bill, including the leak, and the adjusted bill shall be subject to the town, to the approval of the town council as part of the Town of Culver's one-time sewer forgiveness program. So that is the one thing that we have in offer. That's, that's our policy on sewer forgiveness. So we typically don't, don't reimburse or refund for usage.
I make the motion, we approve the one-time forgiveness in this case, whenever that reaches. You're surprised?
I do, because the water, one, it hasn't been proven that the water did not go down. Was not, did not, was not treated by the sewer.
But if it were...
If there was a leak and it would, it could prove that it did not go down the sewer, then we could do the one-time, you could do the one-time forgiveness per our policy.
Since it was on a toilet, apparently did go down the sewer.
That's my understanding, not having seen it, so.
Is there, is there any clause at all? And I heard that phrase, but is there any clause at all? Obviously, she didn't use it, or people didn't use it. So if it wasn't used, can there be a clause in there that would be in that verbiage that even though it wasn't, even though it went down the sewer, it wasn't used for the purpose of a toilet, that it could be forgiven?
I will say, this is the policy that we have. This is a policy that we followed. So if there are any changes that you want to make to the policy, that's something that the council will need to discuss. And I will say that you're probably opening, opening the door to a lot of issues. And I will just, I will leave it at that. I'm trying to be very professional and the personal feelings outside of this.
Is there any adjustment partial?
Again, this is the policy that we follow since I've been here, and it was written, I think it was written maybe my first year, but it was, had been followed previous. So I guess that would be something that I would turn over to the attorney if...
The original ordinance goes back to nineteen ninety-five, as far as I can trace it back. And it's referenced within our town ordinances. And preference to nineteen ninety-five, the original, the original ordinance itself is probably more stringent to what our policy is considering at the moment because it says regardless of where the water went, whether it went outside or inside the system of sewer, it was being charged. The policy has revised that apparently all the time to give the forgiveness if it doesn't pass. And I think there's two separate matters, maybe on what the policy says or should say. Those are entertained differently, possibly. Maybe it's times where we look at that policy, not sure, but that's where we're at with the policy.
People generally have good intentions when they draft these policies, but they're often, don't think about the practicality of enforcing. I mean, how in the world is a resident going to prove to you where the water went? So absent bringing a plumber in here and putting them on the road, so having an engineer. Look, you know, there's no way of knowing where it went. I know it's also common for municipalities across utilities to not be particularly forgiven. I've paid large water bills. I've had a flapper that wasn't sealed. Because you have to pay for the service. It's coming out of the tech, the other dispenser absorbing that cost. So it seems like the policy might need a rewrite, and maybe you could just come up with a flat rate, you know, one time, up to fifty percent discount, something like that, just go off the top of it. Because what you have is largely unenforced.
Croy, any thoughts?
So I guess my question to Kevin is, given the information that we know, we can't, we can't make that.
Well, you're the authority. You can do what you want. But I mean, you should follow rules. You're making Karen's down incredibly hard. If it's your wish, you wash it off the top of it. Because everybody's gonna come in here with their bill and say to her, I want a discount on that rate. But I mean, as far as this case in front of you is concerned, I don't think there's any way she can prove to you where the water went. So you're under no obligation to do anything. But that said, I think, so if you want to be a strict instructionist with the policy, then I don't think your hands are kind of tied. Same time, you are kind of the final.
My big concern, aside from the fact that I work with this person, when we raised the rates, which we're getting ready to do, this would have been a two or three thousand dollar bill. And that could significantly hit a family or a single elderly person. That concerns me. I'm also, I know if we get software in place so we can identify it while it's happening and we can warn that homeowner, especially people that live out of town that might not be aware of it, that'll help tremendously, I think. Because, and I think in your case, forty-five days of this happening, like if we could have identified it at day thirty or the day the bills were run, we would have saved fifteen days of that happening, or whatever the case is. But when it's that much time traversing, we're gonna end up, some people, with two to three thousand dollar bills for the raised rate. That concerns me.
Really? No, I'm... A lot of times, the people will have, you know, an extra four, four or five thousand gallons go through because they catch it, know what happened. You see the real big ones, that does impact the person. Speak for some elder reading. Not necessarily hear it running yourself, as your hearing starts to diminish. So, you know, actually, some senior citizens are more likely to not hear it running, not realize it's coming. I think the new software will definitely, plus it, once it's fully installed, I know it's gonna take time to get it moving as well. I, I think you need to change the policy because now envy is extremely excessive.
Well, we've got the issue at hand. And Terry, do you have anything you want to add to the work for her?
I, I don't know some of the water went on the floor. I know the water went under the floor. Besides that, I can't tell, I would say some, most of the water probably went down the sewer because I couldn't find that many hundreds of gallons in the basin or in the room that it was. I mean, there is water there. It wasn't that kind of water. So that's what I saw when I was there.
The current policy is, Kevin mentioned fifty percent. This is all or nothing, correct?
It would be on the sewer only, not the water. So, and if I may make a suggestion, that we have Ms. Bask go ahead and fill out the application and give it to us so that I could bring it to you.
I can create late fees? Wait till the next meeting? Will that create a late fee on the report?
Well, the due date's the fifteenth. So in the next meeting's the twentieth.
Yeah, so we're gonna ask for...
Well, how about this? Can I give you the application? Have you still out here in the meeting?
I have, I, that's, you know what? I will pay it. You guys can discuss the policy and talk about it at a late date. I just feel like, um, I'll just go ahead and pay it, and then you can discuss veterans, whether you can get forgiveness, can you credit that? That's, if that's the outcome.
This software, just had to walk into a tangent. This software, if we were to purchase it, when could it be installed?
Currently looking at it with the water meter improvements. So when we're installing the water meters, we're gonna use it, but I don't have a specific date. I prefer not to put Bob in that position because we're still working on that contract, getting it solidified. But we'd like to see it within a year, as it will help. It's not a hundred percent, but it will catch some of these. We hit this one close to the billing side. There are some that aren't, and it's difficult. It doesn't take long. It really doesn't take long for water to run up, right? We've seen it. But getting this software is one step that's gonna help, I think. The other thing too, if I may, and I don't think, I think the policy does need revision because it's interpreted, I think Kevin brought that out. And so in the course of doing it, to kind of see comparatively what ours looks like, I pulled from about nine different towns. So there are some models for us to look at, and a lot of them are not determining whether the water flows down the system or not, because very quickly Kevin said. And then it is usually a fifty percent policy. And it usually is only for the sewer portion because that's all the state allows. So it's not a choice. But apart from that, I can provide those models possibly, if you want to entertain that conversation.
What have we done in the past?
Well, number one, we have people fill out the application and turn it in.
Right.
And it allows some time for Julie to go ahead, Julie Howell, my deputy, to, to review and figure out what the, what the reimbursement would be. But we also have Bob go over and take a look to confirm, to see if we can figure out what happened. You know, sometimes it'll be a drain in the basement. Like if it was a, you know, a pipe burst during the winter, and the water just leaked and it went down to the basement, it went down a French drain or something, he can confirm that it, it did not go down the sewer. So typically, if we know that it's a toilet, will it buy, if it's a running toilet, you know, it's kind of usually kind of obvious based on the, the amount of gallons of water going through the system. And we'll just say, you know, this is, you can go through the process and you can come to the council. But typically, if the water went through our sewer system, it's not going to get paid first.
But we have no way another water went through the system?
The room it's in is, it's a slab. It used to be a cardboard. But, so there's no way of knowing, like, did it go down the drain? That's where Terry gave some attention.
So at what point do we offer that to the person who's happy-ish?
Typically, if people... Julie takes the initiative to run a report with high usage, which is what she did in this case. And then she'll call the homeowners and try to get a hold of them and advise them to say, hey, you have high water usage. Do you have, you know, do you know, sometimes they'll say, oh, my goodness, yes, I know I had a pipe burst. This is what happened, that type of thing. Sometimes they'll be like, you know, I don't know, and then they accuse us of all kinds of things. It can be very unpleasant, honestly, and that gets a little trying. But, you know, she'll talk through, you know, do you have a water heater? Do you have this? Do you have that? You know, just trying to help them through. Is your toilet running? You know, if it's, if they're like, I don't know, we'll come down and get some tablets you can put in the, in the toilet tank and see if, if that's what's, what the issue is. And, you know, she'll try to say, there's a sewer forgiveness that you can do if it hasn't gone through the system. And then we'll offer that. So I don't know if it had been or not. I was just trying to provide you as much information as I could under the understanding that you are in both the evening.
That's when Julie called me. I was told I could be put on a payment plan for that, I could do some late fees. So...
Well, I think at that time she was under the understanding that it had gone out before that. So it had gone.
Well, I had not gotten out of there until people at work checked it out. By that point, Jason got over and turned the water on.
Bill?
Well, I'm quite, Carrie Chuff, with the five-twenty South Pullman. I'm also a seasonal owner. Isn't there some onus on the owner to manage the water when they're not there? I shut mine down. I turn the valve off. I drain the hot water tank. Everything's closed off. So if it, if there's a water problem, it's not gonna be my instigation. I think that's probably the easiest thing to do if you're not gonna be in a house for a while.
I go back and forth on the county in there.
But if it's too easy, you turn the valve, then it's done.
I didn't know what's running.
Yeah, but still, I mean, if you, if your, if your air conditioner got stuck on for three months, NIPSCO sends you a bill for twenty-five hundred dollars, they're not gonna say, sorry.
With all due respect, the debate isn't between the public, so.
No, but it's public, it's totally discussion.
This is public discussion. It's for her, make her, her request. It isn't public. I heard Bill open it for public's sake.
I will, I will still have the application and bring it to Julie tomorrow, and I'll start to... Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input? Bearing none. Anyone online? Public dialogue.
I'm sorry.
Get his signature to the card.
Okay. We have a public hearing on ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero zero nine, additional appropriations for police computers out of the CCI fund. Like the motion to open a public hearing. It's been moved by Mr. Charlie, the second. Second by Mr. De Nier. I have five minutes, so six fifty-five. Okay, public hearing is open.
I will tell you that this ordinance is asking for approval, basically requesting additional appropriations, which is a set that we need to take in order to spend taxpayer money. There was a, the council gave approval for the purchase of three G-TAC S four ten semi-rugged laptops for the police cars a couple of weeks ago in the amount of five thousand seven hundred dollars. And at that time, I suggested that we take the money out of the Community Improvement Fund. We cannot budget any money out of that fund during budget time. And so in order to access and use those funds, we have to go through the additional appropriations process, basically making the public aware that we're gonna spend this money as it is tax-generated and just let them do it.
Anybody have any, counselors, any questions regarding the ordinance?
I do not.
Okay.
Think improving technology is pretty standard across the board for all industries. Chad, do you have any idea how old they are?
I tried to find that information today. I would say they're probably shy of ten years. So we have two different sets of computers. We have a somewhat of a newer one that we acquired when we got the new patrol cars a couple of years ago. So we have a set of those, and the ones that we're requesting are gonna be the same model. The three that are the oldest that are gonna be replaced, again, they're probably shy of ten years. I would like to come in here and replace all of them at one time. I would really like to get on a stagger replacement so that we don't have to come in with large chunks and replace them all at one time. I tried to get these babyed through, on lack of a better term. So I reached out to our local IT people in South Shore. I took one of the computers to South Shore and had them upgrade the memory, thinking it would help because, one, I couldn't, it was actually mine in my patrol car. I couldn't even hardly get the computer to start. It would probably take fifteen minutes to start it up when I'm running the CAD and the police program in our car. And that's something that's changed with technology the last few years is we're doing a lot more stuff in the car on the computer. The same information that I have in the office is the same information I have in the car. And I get the constant not responding error all the time. So the computer locks up. You'll be in the middle of a call. You'll be in the middle of a traffic stop, and you have no computer. So...
Chad, should we begin either these instead of three?
I would be, I would be comfortable with three. Again, I want to try to stagger those out so that we're not replacing multiple ones all at the same time, and then they're all going out at the same time. So I'd like to get on a rotation where, you know, if we have five patrol cars, or excuse me, I have six patrol cars, one would be in the spare. If I can get on a year rotation with every one of those, then I can keep that computer hopefully until six years, and then it's about time to go. And I'm, and I'm not trying to replace a bunch of them at once. So yes, these three are the most pressing ones that have to be replaced. The other ones are a few years.
And you already approved this purchase at a right year.
Yeah.
So this is just allowing me to use the, this particular fund.
There's no other comment?
This is the end of the public hearing. That's settled. Seconded by Mr. Charlie. I show six, but the closing. We gotta go, Bill. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Okay.
Aye. Those same sign. Hearing's closed.
Do you have a motion to pass them first?
I've got it later on the... Oh, I see it. Okay. You can, there's no, there's no old business.
Go right to old business.
There is no old business.
There's no old business, okay. New business. Authorized signature for First Amendment to the Dunes Economic Development Agreement.
I have that for you. And I have a First Amendment to the Economic Development Agreement within this amendment. We're not changing the structure of the bonds. The A and B bonds remain, as we're familiar with, the A bond being residential phase one. B bond contingent upon the approval of the town of both residential structures and infrastructures of that phase one. B bond is the second bond that will be issued upon that completion and approval for the second development or second part of the residential. Under the advice of Barnes-Thornberg, we went ahead and created allocation area three to attach to if we issue bond B. And that puts us in a nice conservative reading of the state statute with terms of bonds and the relationship to allocation areas. The amendment really centers around the creation of that allocation area three and establishing the income from that TIF, attaching it to bond B. That way, we have separate allocation areas for separate bonds. Other than that, the details don't change. We've looked at this. We've gone through plan or redevelopment. Tonight, I'm asking the council to authorize the president's signature upon the amendment.
Motion to approve to have Bill submitting the first amendment.
This is my move to have the president sign this agreement. Seconded by Mr. Charlie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Do the update of the document.
Yes, sir.
Put it in the books, sir.
Next is the... Next is the introduce ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh oh eight amend the water rates.
We have the ordinance in front of you. I just wanted to get it on the the council's agenda. There is a first reading next. Next meeting. I sent the ordinance out to you all. I've also sent it out on town down Lake. I've had an article published in the Culver Citizen. I honestly didn't check to see if it made it in there, but. Just reviewing what the rates were and I have copies of the articles here for anybody who would like to read it.
It's also located on the town's website underwater rate discussion. Decreased discussion, maybe put it. It's a link that you can click and go right to it.
Now, there's a public hearing.
July twenty fourth. And I'll put the first reading on the next. On the first reading will be on the next agenda.
But public hearing will be before.
Oh, yes.
First reading, right?
I just want to make sure everybody's aware. That this is what we're considering or is like council.
Next is ordinance two thousand twenty five dash oh nine additional appropriations. Second, this will move to approve the additional appropriation. Second, all those in favor, second by us saying aye. Those same sign. Okay. Department reports. Emergency services.
Yeah. Uh, EMS would like to discuss with the council tonight a growing concern that, uh. Not only the time of call or the time of caller has been having, but the state of Indiana over the last five to seven years, that is the number of paramedics in departments. Lot of departments just aren't getting the numbers that they they used to. And I'm starting to see that hit home now here at Culver. Started seeing it seeing it probably at the end of last year. I was hoping that things would improve. It doesn't seem to be improving this year. Uh, we're getting every shift covered with paramedics. Primarily from the full-time staff picking up shifts and. Doing what I can do to adjust the schedule to get part timers when they can work in here. Talking with our part timers. Trying to find out what's going on because really our roster for this size of a community is great. We have three full-time paramedics. And we have ten part-time paramedics. Part-time paramedics are telling me that they are so overworked at their full-time departments where they were. With mandatory mandatory overtime or just just picking up regular overtime that they just. They're burnt out. They they don't have the free time to come down there and work anymore. So I feel like that's what's going on. Um, so I just wanted to report to the council about a concern I have moving forward. Where the month of July is is we've got every shift covered with a paramedic. Every every shift, we want a paramedic and an EMT on an ambulance. Uh, that's that's what we've said to the town. We're going to provide and that's what we're going to provide. Uh, for the month of August. Actually, it's looking good at this point because I only have three open paramedic shifts for August. So so typically that that's pretty good. Uh, considering we're only halfway through July here with that. So I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention that. This has been going on in Indiana EMS for a while. It's it's but I'm starting to see it kind of hit home. I've been into some discussions with budgetary. This time of the year with with Kevin and Karen to talk about some of our possible ways of fixing this or making it better. So obviously there'll be more to come on that, but I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention that. It's it's getting tough to get paramedics scheduled in every shift.
How long is the shift?
We we consider a shift twelve twelve hours. So. Most paramedics will pick up the whole the whole day, the whole twenty four. So that's two shifts. Because if they're going to come down here, they'd rather work twenty four than just come down for twelve. But sometimes it's it's a shift is considered twelve. And right now in August, I've only got three twelve-hour shifts open and that's good. Considering the last four months how it's been. It comes down to kind of last minute. Not sure who's going to have to work. Usually it's probably me, you know. And then the problem with that is then our overtime starts to creep up. Because I I work my my normal shifts, but I'm having to pick up extra shifts. I'm the only paramedic out of the fifteen fourteen. This is my only EMS job, so I have I have more free time. Everybody else is working their other departments jobs. I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. Uh, there'll be more to come on that, though.
Are there ever some of our full-time paramedics work another job where they'll pick up like two shifts? Would it benefit us to, um, incentivize a salary for those people where we? Ask for one more shift a week versus where they're at, but increase the salary to?
So there's. I'm full-time and then I've got two other full-time paramedics. They don't pick up extra shifts. That that's we've had that discussion.
Sure.
Your time here too. So your your responsibility is when you're scheduled and everybody knows their schedule a month ahead of time. When you're scheduled here, you're you don't pick up anything extra at your other full-time job. And that hasn't been a problem.
Do we still? Is Indiana, I know how long it takes to get your paramedic and it's kind of expensive. Are there basics and and advanced EMTs that would like to go on if it weren't for the expense or the time investment or? Is there a way to incentivize that?
Possibly. You're you're saying that the town would would pick up maybe some of the expense to go to paramedic school?
I'm just wondering because I there was a time you've had some basics and advanced when you even had a policy, I think, that if you. Committed, was it a year after you got your paramedic, we would pay for the paramedic and if you didn't. Do the full year, you had to pay it back or whatever, but I just wondered if there's even an interest in it anymore because I know it's time consuming and. The market pays better in other areas. So are people still willing to become a paramedic?
That's the problem. A lot of them aren't. And that's what's causing the whole problem in the state, probably the whole nation, but definitely in state. If anymore to become a paramedic, you've got about two years of schooling. And then it's taking these medics almost a year to pass the national registry to get their license. I don't know if those tests have just become so much harder. I don't know. A lot of people just don't feel like for the pay and what they're going to get out of it. And it's really the the investment in that that schooling. It's it's when when you're going to that paramedic school two years, you're still working full-time on on your shift somewhere. And you've got your classes, which a lot of places are like like a a full day Monday and Thursday, but then on the other day you're doing clinicals. Or working your shift and then and then you got to get into you. There's so much right time on an ambulance. So it's precepting on an ambulance, clinicals in a hospital, going to class and working, still working.
It pays better to get a nursing degree at that stage. Which has been incentivized.
And they're full of paramedics. Mike and I were talking about paramedics are in commerce.
Yeah. They they really incentivize nurses to.
In fact, they're trying to get paramedics now, but the way they're doing that is if you're a paramedic, they have this express.
Oh, like an accelerated.
So you can become a nurse in in a year if you're a paramedic versus getting your bachelor. You gotta you gotta. It's a bachelor's degree now for an RN.
You don't panic. I mean, there's like.
So what are some of your thoughts? Want to discuss that this time or later?
Uh, I'd rather wait, Bill.
Alright, okay. So if there's any more questions for Mike? Okay.
I got a couple more ones. Joe, Joe Burgraff. Culver resident and Chief Executive of Ferno Medical Equipment. Graciously has donated two power stair chairs to Culver EMS. And stair chairs are the foldable chairs that we can take into the upstairs back bedrooms of people's houses to get them. Out of a tight space downstairs or maybe even upstairs if they're in the basement. Normally that's a hundred percent. The paramedic EMT and maybe a police officer's, you know, trying to get them up the stairs safely. Now these stair chairs, they have these tracks that come down. And they're the tracks are on a stair and they automatically kind of go up the stairs. Now we still have to control it. And, you know, it's not taking a hundred percent of the load off of us, but I I'd say it's taking probably fifty percent of it off. It's kind of going back to the same concept as the power, uh, power cots and the power loads. It's trying to take. It's trying to limit injuries in EMS. So. I want to thank, uh, Joe. For his gracious donation to Culver EMS for those stair chairs. That's that's awesome. He's also. Ferno is getting into this high-tech virtual reality training for hospitals, EMS. All different kind of medical, uh, situations, but he's got it. We have to. Virtual reality, which I don't know much about. This is all me. Those goggles that you wear and it's like you're in the scene. Like we can make a trauma scene in here and it looks real. Well, he's donating basically the software for us to program any type of scenario we want. And then all of our staff can come in, put these goggles on and they've got to go through this. Scenario where they come in and the patient's there and they're, you know, they're missing a leg. You you can do whatever you want. There's there's hundreds and hundreds of scenarios. And we get to program. And like our equipment, our bags, like say, like, let's say our orange backpack, our blue airway bag, that all is programmed in there. So. If I say, if I tell my partner to go get the airway bag, the blue airway bag shows up. So it's it's true. It's true virtual reality, real life training. And that's something that Joe has 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 donated to us too. So we're still working on getting that software all set up. So that's not up and running, but when it when it does, you guys will have to come and check it out.
So unique way to train.
Yeah, it's totally different. And and it's a great way for us because again, with everybody working. All over, all of the departments all over Northwest Indiana, we can't have in-person trains. Everybody is working. So we have to do a lot of Zoom trainings, online trainings. We do do certain days where you have to come to do certain skills in person, but but this is a great way for us to train. It it works out for for this type of departments. It's great. So. So thanks to Joe. Um, lastly, last weekend, uh, Fourth of July weekend, we had a pretty busy weekend. EMS had quite a few calls. They had to land a helicopter for a, uh, firework incident. And then throughout that whole twenty-four hour shift, they also transported two other trauma patients itself. So great job to the the crews that worked the weekend. They did great. They provided great medical care on scene. They great. They made great decisions on the transport decisions. So kudos to them. I want to thank Culver Fire for helping us as they always do set up the landing zone for the helicopter. That was awesome. That's a huge help to us. Thanks. Thanks for Culver Fire for that. Anything else? That's all I got. Thank you. Carrie.
Uh, just to touch on a little bit of what he said. Fourth of July weekend, pity what he didn't know. Was the busiest I've been here sixteen plus years, busiest I've ever seen. So what few incidents we had. Handled very well. But it was just, it could have been so much worse with that many people. Built it over and moved it out of the way. Now, I'm not I'm not talking about fire trucks, police system for anybody. Lot of the walking path is a great thing. I could take a few spots and shit out of that. But it's just a, it went well. I was so like, I was just freaked because you couldn't go anywhere. That end of town. So I thought like, don't build that. No matter what. West Shore was it's crazy. And I did. I was just glad that. Minor incidents. Problems, but. Besides that, I just want to say it's.
Thank you, Chris.
Chief Becker.
Thank you, council members. So this is my first official report to you. So last Monday. I was the official swearing in on the thirtieth here. So I'm settling in and it's. Going to be a learning curve on a couple of different things and. I appreciate the council putting Kevin in the position, Kevin Zankersley in the position he's in because I reach out to him every now and then when I eat stuff. But, uh, you should have got, uh, if you didn't check your mailboxes, um, we'll have last month's monthly reports in there. Piggybacking on EMS and fires report, we were fortunate enough to have the Fourth of July call on a Friday. So we got, uh, Friday and Saturday. Of everybody being here. Saturday, the fifth was the fireworks display. Um, and I think probably having that on Saturday, a lot of the communities had their traditional fireworks on Friday, the fourth. And so we probably got an influx of people coming in from other communities. On the law enforcement side. I want to thank publicly the Marshall County Reserves. They sent some officers down. We had five officers. Working in the park on Saturday for the lake fest. Uh, I came in, we had two of us on the road. And then for the egress after fireworks, we made sure that we covered all the crosswalks on Lake Shore Drive. Um, had traffic or, uh, pedestrian control there, helping people across the street. They're all going up to the side streets. And then, uh, we did traffic control at some of the intersections too. So, uh, they're always a big help on our busy weekends when we can have. Uh, we're preparing for the upcoming lake fest in a couple of weeks, so. This weekend will give us a break and then we jump right back into another busy weekend. So we're looking forward to that. And. I believe that's all I have on my schedule.
Congratulations on your first.
Thank you. I believe Andrea may want to pipe up, but I believe that's going to handle the Kevin's question. On the lake fest. Follow up.
We can do it now if you'd like. Want to get out and I want to be courteous to you.
Yeah, no, just the beer garden. Um, Frida, this is going to be. Uh, hosting the beer garden for lake fest. It'll be from five PM to ten PM if you guys approve of it. Um, they've gone through exercise and they, I believe they've touched base with you already or. Had it. Thanks for you. And it'll be in the same place as last year, uh, kind of in front of that mural between the West Pavilion and the East Pavilion. Um, and we'll be having an officer on site. So. If anything else, I need this to.
Just that, um, at the June meeting when she came in, you guys, um, approved the special use permit, but wanted her to come back in terms of the beer garden. So. Um, she got with Frida's. They did provide that.
The only thing we're waiting on, if I understood, Chad came to talk to me. The only thing we're waiting on, Chad sent the information down to state. Is that correct?
So I've I've signed off and approved the permit for Frida's and I followed back up with them today and they did get their approval. So now it's, um. Just waiting on you guys' approval to have that beer garden as part of this.
I make the motion to be excluded back beer garden at the lake fest.
Second.
Mr. Burrow, the beer garden. Mr. Bear seconds. All those in favor, second by us saying aye. Those same sign. Alright, stay.
Chad, on your report, I want to. Who is seventeen, but looks like she's twelve, wanting me to cast on her appreciation for how professional. The police officer was who stopped to make sure she had a driver's license on the golf cart. She was terrified because she's never been pulled over by a police officer, but she said he was very professional and kind to her. Checked her license. She's like, thank God I had it on me. And then she told me how I needed to thank the police officer. So there is very officially.
Thank you. For that as well.
Park. Anybody here for Park?
Harry's now run. This place has been incredibly busy with how hot it's been at the park. Fourth of July wasn't even our busiest weekend. The weekend before that, we had twenty one hundred people come to the park from Friday to Sunday. We had, I think, ten guards. They ended up using my paddleboard on the outside perimeter of the movies and stuff. It's, uh, it's been busy. I have a really great staff this summer and I appreciate all of them. It's not going to be too quiet this weekend though, because we do have this, um, moonlight serenade on Friday night and then we have movie of the park on Saturday night. And then into lake fest next week. And one of my concerns is that our camera system throughout the park, um, is. Apparently approximately nine years old and I would like to update the cameras. We Karen reached out to the company that we use already. Um, for an upgrade quote, we've got that. I've reached out to two other companies. One on Monday, the other the following Monday. I've reached out to two other companies. Um, I have one on Monday, the other the following Monday, depending on how this Monday goes. Uh, to get a couple of other quotes on those and, uh. Just making you aware that next meeting I'll probably come and ask for, um, be okay to use some of those funds to get those new cameras installed.
Specifically, we're going to get better coverage, it appears, as well as we can expand it out into the park more.
Yeah, these ones have facial recognition and they.
I'll know the exact raccoon that's violated.
We need to have a lull in the raccoon activity right now. Thanks. But aside from that, I have nothing else.
Thank you, Crystal. Thank you very much. Utilities, is Bob on the line?
He is.
Bob?
I'm on the line. I'll make mine real easy. I don't have anything for it. You have questions for me?
Questions for Bob? Tom Landry report.
I'm going to start off and sort of reverse with appreciation that I have, uh, on several levels. Uh, the park has been fantastic handling the load. Um, trash is being picked up and I appreciated the, the. I had the opportunity to walk through the park over the holiday and see families enjoying it with cookouts. And it was really nice to see. The different functions and use of the park and how much the public it brings in. With that said, that public space, and I agree with Terry, I had the opportunity to stop, talk to Terry after the call and. We both were commenting on how busy it is in parking. Um. It's something that I think we should explore possibly. And I do understand that this is a momentary issue. The, the influx of people, but it's happening at greater frequency in the summer and with the golf cart frequency and. Just some things to pay attention about. Maybe we want to look at a public, from a public safety standpoint, is. Is there something we can do infrastructure-wise, simple, to reroute, re-traffic, repark and, and understanding it? And taking a look at that. And there's a lot going on as we increase with housing. That's something that's going to be pressing and. So I put it in my notes and it's something to pay attention to moving forward. Um, I was able to pull up, uh, we were coming back from Harvest Moon. We took West Shore and it was through, it was just one of those chance things. I pulled up right as the ambulance arrived at the public. Voting area, the D N R section there, and I saw the ambulance and I, I got to tell you, these guys responded. I was able to. See the person sitting there and that's not an easy job. And I have traffic, I have my hazards on and a car whips right around us. Phil Terry and he said, well, that's nothing. They'll go through ditches to get around. That's a dangerous job that guys have and I really appreciate it. Just being able to see it on the scene, which you don't normally really get to do. Also with the response on the fire call, right? It was a nice cooperative effort. Um, police, you guys did wonderful job. Uh, overtime tonight, we had a main go and our guys are down, um, utilities are in the ditch tonight, right? And overtime at three o'clock and they get it fixed over by the cemetery, get everything, get the notices out, people. Um, letting them know what's happening, trying to get out and Karen made me the meal. I went around distributing flyers. I got to meet a lot of people that way. Uh, but just watching the whole thing work out. It's really nice guys, good conversations. So thank you. Um, and we're going to keep going. Lake Fest is next week. And so it's exciting and, and look forward to that. I hear some guys emceeing on this. Um, I need to ask the council tonight for work session reviews, projects. I've been working on a portfolio of projects for updates. The portfolio will include a brief history of the project, the scope of work. Uh, what we're intending to do or what we have done. Some of these projects are in their final stages. Uh, we'll give you a timeline of those projects as well as a funding breakdown, as much as Karen. Tries to help me understand it. So I get that Karen a lot, but try to put things together. Um, they're intended not to be comprehensive, but, uh, for a talking point, a discussion that will happen. Um, I would appreciate a work session in the next two weeks. That doesn't have to be answered tonight. I just wanted to put that on your radars. Um, I would love your advice and feedback on the projects as well, because some of them are forthcoming.
Should we add it to the council meeting the same night?
Let me just wrote that down, yeah. And I don't, yeah. That's council's pleasure, absolutely.
That before to remain, if it works for you guys. Are you thinking like an hour, hour and a half?
I, I am. And, and the thing, I think, Jay, I'm kind of envisioning getting it in your hands here next week. And then allowing you to. Generate some questions so we can have dialogue before that, then to come together and just have a discussion. It should be pretty quick moving, I would think. If I'm talking to the great, that's, yeah.
On what day then?
Go for it in the next council meeting, July.
Uh, moving forward, uh, we have a hotel feasibility study coming to town on Monday. Um, Jessica Yunker from Core Distinct Group. Uh, primarily working and soliciting information. There is a core survey that we'll be distributing. I've reached out to Gray Hillenbrand. As well as Marty Osterborn, kind of guiding who, whom we should distribute this survey to. Um, they're looking for obviously regional activity that pulls in. Um, it's oftentimes been said, yes, we need a hotel and no, we don't. We're going to find out. We're going to get some data and we're going to, and the academy is on board. So there, I'm, I'm going to ask the, the. The leadership over there, if they would be willing to distribute it to some parents to see if they would stay, if they had it. So we're trying to build a data set to help navigate a decision on that. We'll find out hopefully. Um, had some good conversations about development. Um, the theater is becoming a reality and it's starting to move. Don't have the details yet, but I know they're really starting to push for R F P stages and really starting to look. Uh, I had a nice conversation with the N A N of preservation. Um, and they would like to come to town, uh, in the next two weeks, not only for the theater, if the theater. Uh, is in a preservation project, but they would be interested in looking at our park as well as the Osborne block. Um, given that that's kind of got the historical feel to it. Uh, great, great meeting today and I think they're a wonderful resource. Um, to help maybe shake some ideas about, uh, preservation downtown. So I really do look forward to that. Um, great meeting on trees this week and we've got the species list and they're hard at place in those hundred trees and. I tell you what, probably one of the best tree meetings ever in Culver. The other night, it was a great Wednesday night. Um, but apart from that, I really appreciate, I kind of appreciated the job this week. So, thank you. Yes?
What's the status on the Culver documentary?
Culver documentary has now been finalized. They are in final production stage. The anticipated release dates are going to be released. Yeah, that's going to be huge. Uh, when they get it out there. Um, I'm supposed to be getting the one-minute commercial for distribution back probably in end of August, September. They haven't been able to fossilize. These things are sort of fluid. They were anticipating, um, airing dates in October. So I'll have a better information of that. Final cut was really nice. It was a horrible day. Took great. Took some old footage that we had left over from stellar to blend in some of the beach shots with some of the new fresh stuff that they produced. I think we've got a great product. The idea too with the one-minute commercial is I would like, and with council permission, when it comes time. To distribute it to some H R's up north and some of the factories they're putting in because what I've been told is we're a viable housing selection. For some of the factories coming in and I would like to get it distributed into the H R's so people know that there's, this, there's this wonderful place called Culver. Come live with us full time. Um, but yeah, that's long answer, short question.
But Kevin, your comment about parking, did, with the park, did people ever use our water tower parking area?
It was pretty darn cool.
Yeah.
And I appreciate you.
The hot weekend, you're talking around, I was picking up my. You have to crawl through the parking lot because the little kids come darting out and. One family, the woman had so many children, like I just stopped and waited it out until they were all in the car. Because one little guy just kept leaving her and she was freaking out because cars are trying to cut through. So I sat there and blocked anyone behind me. And then I got hogged at, given the finger and the whole bit. I was like, oh, well, I'm not moving till that two-year-old's in the car.
Bob and I were kind of flirting with a couple of conversations about as we reinvent Lake Shore with this upcoming project, looking at. Traffic pacification through there and understanding, but you know what? I appreciate you keeping me on stage because I've got one more point. No order.
I was kind of looking at it from a like could be some confinement too because. The one thing I noticed is how narrow it is to drive through it with parking on each side. And if anyone has a truck, they have to pull all the way into the grass, otherwise the tail ends takes out. Yeah, that's, yeah. And then the, and there's that hill, so they don't want to go too far. And then we don't have a lot of A D A in there, you know.
There's a, there's.
Well, just be that double. But maybe we could bump out on the one side into the Lake Shore.
It's a conversation.
Yeah.
Especially as we continue to see.
I think it's smart to be thinking about it because we've never seen these numbers and with the key.
I was good. Uh, I apologize because this is what happens when it slips to the bottom. I do have one. There was a change order, uh, originally back in, I believe, April. Midwest has provided me, Mark Sullivan has provided me that change order in order to complete for paperwork for ready. Um, we just need that change order officially signed. I'm going to ask council. And essentially all I did was extend the ready project up till the end of August, which was a request made by the developer. Uh, so we went ahead and granted that, but for proper filing, we need the paperwork. I asked the council to make a motion to.
Mr. Marine, moves to have the first to assign the documents for a second. Second by Mr. Schardy, all those favors, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both standing.
Thanks. That's it for me. Thank you.
Miss Hime.
Um, so I have several claims under over twenty-five hundred dollars for your approval. Culver Portside Marina, three thousand fifty dollars and sixty-four cents, and that is for pier repairs. Miller, two for Miller Insurance Group, one for three thousand five hundred and ten dollars, and that's for the fire accident insurance. So the additional bill coming, um, for the additional policy that you approved. I think it was last meeting. Um, secondly, for Miller, Miller's, uh, four thousand five hundred and three dollars. That's the EMS accident insurance policy. And then finally V S Engineering, six thousand four hundred dollars. And that comes on the street for structural services and that's from the Lake Shore project.
Questions over twenty-five hundred? Mr. Mayor moves, Mr. Perry, second. All those in favor, second by by saying aye. Aye, both standing.
Um, the second thing I have is. Asking for approval of a texting program, uh, like, you know, it's all, it's called Text My Go. Kevin and I watched, uh, I watched a sales presentation on it and then I had Kevin and, um, asked Bob. Bob wasn't able to attend, but, um, to watch it again. Um, it's something where residents can sign up. Provide their contact information, whether it's a, it's their phone number and, um, we can push out notifications to them. Um, it, they can sign up for different, um, I'll call them lines. So like you could have something for if you want utilities notifications. Or, um, we could probably, we could possibly share it with the library and allow them to send out notifications for the library or maybe the visitor center. Um, so it, it's expandable. It wouldn't just be us, um, and outside of Culver could, could sign up as well. There's also work order. Point to it. So residents, like if they saw a pothole on Lake Shore Drive, they could text it, a pothole on Lake Shore Drive. And then it would send a text to Bob and Bob could, you know, respond or say it's in care over that to a request or whatever. Um, the cost per, per year is three thousand five hundred dollars. Um. The one thing that as I was trying to send out notifications this afternoon to people. Bono and South Main Street and people that were affected by the water shut off. Um, I had to search by each individual line and redo the thing. This, you can actually go on and draw a square and target. People within that area and it'll take care of them. So, um, we do have some capability within our utility billing system, but I think this is actually more with us. And would allow people, uh, you know, maybe those that are a town out of Lake that don't necessarily reside in Culver. But want to, you know, find out what's going on or get notifications from us to also sign up. So. I wanted to present that to you for your consideration. If that's something interesting for us.
I think a lot of people get their content through text messaging and then opt in, serve in a size and they can opt in.
And that's the thing, yeah. That's the thing. It's up to the customer to opt in and to opt out. So it's nothing. Yeah, it's something that we have to do and then they can choose what friends they.
Yeah, I, I, I support it. That's low expense for the term. I, I would also prefer people associated with our communication services. A lot of people think we are T G L. It's like. I get yelled at about stuff that's on T G L. I'm like, that's not. I'm sorry dogs get lost and off their leash a lot. You have to hear about it, but yeah, and that, that mean. I make the motion to.
Mr. Merle moves to prove the expense of the texting service for a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mayor, all those in favor, second by saying aye. Aye, both standing.
Thank you. And tomorrow, um, I have the, a, an invoice for your approval. Um, this is from Culver Equities and this is a reimbursement request number seven. You go through the whole process. We have to go back and forth and this is actually money going to Culver Equities that. Is reimbursed by the ready. Um, so the request is two hundred, two hundred thirty-one thousand dollars. Um, for the, the teams and this reimbursement request number seven and I'm hoping that.
Motion to approve request number seven that will be reimbursed by.
Mr. Merle moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Perry, all those in favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Both standing.
Two more things. One, uh, just a reminder that, um, there's an opening on the Marshall County Economic Development Corporation Board. And I just sent an email out last week, um, inviting people to apply. Um, those applications are due July twenty-second. And then the last thing I have, it is budget season. I think I sent out to you. Um, information on the budget calendar, some information that I presented to all the, provided to all of the department heads. Kevin and I are starting to check the heads off. We met with Mike today. We had to get a couple of others scheduled next week. Um, but we do want to have some meetings with the council so that the department heads have the opportunity to present their. Budget, their requested budgets and you have the opportunity to ask questions. Um, don't necessarily want to get into all the nitty-gritty details of it, but have you. Satisfy so that as we move through the budget process into September, October. We've got a set budget and get things approved. Um, to that end, um. I think I put out the week of July twenty-fifth and then the week of the first full week in August. Um, it's looking more likely we would need to do the first, the first full week in August because I, I just don't see us getting things set for the end of July. Um, and.
As I said, I think I'm on that last week, July two.
Yeah, I'm, I'm out and I'm not coming back like it's past year. So. I'm not even laying down. I'm not even.
You are coming back.
I will come back following. Not going on. Thank you. So, um, I will just say the week of, if August fourth through eighth, um. There are no evening meetings. That's a week that we do not have a council meeting. Um, I think we probably would need to meet after six-thirty due to. I think probably coaching commitments.
I can know that secondary to what we need.
I'm just trying to, but also people getting out from work and, you know, having to get back to Culver. So. I want to be mindful of, of various schedules that people.
Yep.
Coaching. So, um.
I'm good Tuesday, Thursday, Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be in Florida, so.
Do you want to remote or do you want us to?
I can. I better not say remote because.
Because if this is a vacation, you need to.
You might get Mickey Mouse in there. In our meeting.
So I, I do, I built in some, some buffer. Um, so the following week is an option as well. Um, there is a council meeting on Thursday, but we've got Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, eleven, twelve.
The only time I can.
Okay, the other day, so if we aim for month for the eleventh and twelfth, we'll do six thirty and I'll find out. Is, well, one night we'll do, let's see, park, EMS and fire. Those are the three budgets that involve Marlene. We are, um, Marlene is attending our discussions with the department head, so she is. Is of of what they're thinking. Um, so I just want to make sure that she can be there, um, whichever night. So I will throw out the eleventh and twelfth. Well, I'm sorry. So that's one night. The other night we'll do the clerk, street, lease and the other couple of funds that we have to provide.
Anything else?
No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor, there's a word of thanks to all you department heads. You guys, you have passion, opportunity. It is greatly, and thank you. And that one there, I mean, Karen, you your thoughtful communication to so many of us over and over again. We appreciate it.
The only one I have is the one I emailed you guys about and maybe we could just cover it at budget time because it would be likely cost its money. Um, and that's uh, EV stations. Kevin was experiencing the same thing my family was with this daughter's boyfriend.
Boyfriend, whatever you want to call it.
There, the stations were full. There's a great app that you can track when the chart charging station becomes available. And by the time we drive from my mom's house, two minutes away from the station, the station would be full again. But twice that we tried to get it, we witnessed people out there fighting and the one woman was trying to pull a charger out of a car that had been there for like eighteen hours.
That was my dog.
And I was like, wow, this is kind of intriguing to watch all of this. I know there's a lot more Teslas in town. You can see them. Um, but even on these big summer weekends, we're starting to see more. It used to be Academy weekends. You'd see some of these. I think there's room to add one on Jefferson Street, but uh, Kevin and I were also talking like maybe we could look at adding one up in the parking lot near the water tower or over there by the school. Uh, we just need to sort of think about the fact that more people are buying electric cars.
Do that, Bob. I had to start tracking a couple of more questions. Start looking at that data.
And I think um, our, we do have an ordinance that I think because we received a grant, we had to keep the rates a certain place for so many years.
Yeah, we're past, we're past that and you bought that. I think it's three dollars and three fifty.
Yeah, I'm thinking about beyond the, so I think once it gets fully charged, we could start charging, like you can give people an hour to get the charger out. But if they haven't, you can kick into a higher rate. So like in California, it's a hundred bucks an hour at that point. Because they have a real problem going on, but and I'm not suggesting a hundred dollars, but I'm suggesting that if you were paying twenty five an hour, twenty bucks an hour, you might actually go get your car off the hook. Because at that point, you might as well be buying gas, right? Maybe that would help if if we changed our rate. Um, I don't know. My family is installing one at our house just because my sister and her family all have electric cars. So we don't want to run into what we ran into earlier weekend. And it's clement past them. Um, that's probably the closest place to us that have that that have some. Some of theirs are for their police vehicles. They've all electric vehicles. So some of theirs are restricted to police as well.
Apparently there's faster chargers, slower chargers.
Yeah, yeah, there's superchargers. But we have a lot of people coming from Indianapolis, Chicago, et cetera, that I don't know if it's a revenue generator, if we start charging for the time that they go past their allotted time. I see our Main Street organization or visitor center utilizing those funds or Bob utilizing. Right now they're going to the general fund. I think last month we got like two hundred and thirty dollars. So it's something to think about. I think we ought to talk about possibly purchasing another set or looking for a grant. It's kind of a nightmare that I don't work through a grant on those projects. It's kind of a pain, I recall. Yeah, yeah, there's plenty of guidelines. If Bob had to do some stuff for that, but I need to just do it. But the ordinance, we can pull it up at some point. Anyway, that's all.
I wasn't here over the, it was explained, sounds of the traffic. I'm glad I wasn't, but I went to the fireworks where it was at and it took only an hour and a half to get out. So I appreciate it. Good work, guys.
Uh, want to remind everybody of Lake Fest um, next weekend, eighteenth, nineteenth and twentieth. And then um, I want to thank Karen for all her hard work today when the water main went down and all the alerts she sent out. Uh, and then thank you to all of our emergency services. I think Terry was right. There was a period there from about eight in the morning till maybe eleven thirty where there were literally hundreds of people on Lake Shore. Going twenty miles an hour felt like you were going too fast because there were lines in front of every business. Every gas station had lines. Um, and so there there were literally hundreds of people.
Would you say we've generated a lot of tourism dollars?
We have. Yay, tourists. But uh, no, that that's all.
Sincere appreciation to emergency services. And uh, want to thank everybody for uh what they've participated in in Lake Fest. I know put a drain on on our services, but I want to commend all of you for your job well done. I have nothing. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Perry moves to adjourn. The second.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those were the.